All right, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the City of Saratoga Springs Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, November 13, 2025, and we will go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Mann will lead us in that.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Okay, and for role call tonight, we have Commissioner Mangum excused, and we have everyone else here in attendance. We'll go ahead and move to public input. Before I open, time for public input. If you are here for a specific item, that is a business item, that doesn't have public input, um, yeah, if you could just raise your hand if you would like to make public input. Okay, and if that public input is specifically for the Fox Hollow, is, can you put your hand up for that, please? Okay.
Should we vote now on, do we, or do we wait to vote if we open it?
Decide to hear the public comment now or when that item is presented?
Okay.
So just ask the commission for their input on that, and then you can decide.
Okay, perfect. So, um, what we'd like to do is, we'd like to open the, the public comment for Fox Hollow. Sorry, I said that funny. What we'd like to do is, we'd like to make it available for public input on the Fox Hollow, although that isn't a normal public input. So we will need to have the Planning Commission vote on whether we will approve to hear public input at that time for that item. So, do we need a motion for that? All right, so I'll go ahead and open for a motion on that.
I move that we take public comment during the business meeting for anyone that would talk, like to talk about Fox Hollow.
Okay.
And keep it out of the public comment at the beginning.
Okay, so we've got a motion, Commissioner Hill, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Do we have any questions on that motion? Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes unanimously. So we'll now, just want to explain, if you want to make public input, public comment on the Fox Hollow, we've now made it available so that you can do that after we've presented and can be able to talk about it at that time, so that we're not having everything so broken up. Okay? So, if you have public input on an item that is not the Fox Hollow item, we're now going to go ahead and open for public input at that time. All right, seeing no public input, we'll go, oh, we'll go ahead and hear from this gentleman here. And if you could just state your name and address for the record?
Okay, my name is-
Sorry, one more, before we get started, we, we do have a timer here, and we ask that your comments are limited to three minutes.
Okay.
So if you could just actually wait for one second until that gets started. It is a little finicky. All right, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Matt Harris. I live at 2001 South Thoroughbred Drive in Jacobs Ranch. I've lived there for 11 years, and I've watched our quiet neighborhood turn into what feels like a freeway at times. Uh, this summer, I walked around our neighborhood and knocked on all the doors of my neighbors to ask them if they would come to any gathering, because I've heard a few of them mention concerns over the amount of traffic and the outrageous driving behavior we've seen on that street. Um, I had about 60 of my neighbors come to, to a meeting that I had scheduled on a Sunday evening. This isn't an issue that one or two of us have, it's an entire neighborhood, and all of us are worried and feel like we've been, been ignored on this thing. Um, in that meeting, we spent over an hour talking about problems that we have seen and proposed ideas and solutions. So I just have an ask that we be granted time on a future agenda to discuss some of these issues and some proposed ideas that we have, and that's all I have. Thank you.
And could you just state, what street is it exactly that-
It is Lariat.
Is it Bol-
Lariat.
Boulevard.
Going down on Mountain View, down-
Yes, I mean, our neighborhood is the portion behind Maverick, but, uh, there's heinous speeding on the road above us that is not through a neighborhood as well, so that's it.
Just to let you know, later in our agenda today, we're going to be talking about street calming solutions from a consultant, which may be really good to take a look at that and see how that relates to some of the thoughts that your neighbors had.
All right.
And, and that is on, that'll be in the meeting notes.
Our engineers will be reporting on that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and so it's going to be at the end of our agenda, I'm sorry, but it's under the reports tonight.
Okay.
And it was a pretty good read of some things that they felt that they would be able to do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your comment, we appreciate having you here.
My name is Adam Nelson. I live at 2022 South Bridle Circle in Saratoga here, and I wanted, am I good to go? Okay. I, I wanted to second some of what Matt had brought up. I mean, we have actually quite a few of us here, I think eight of us here tonight, out of that group of 60 that Matt talked about. One of the things I wanted to add was, we know that there's going to be that new, I think it's the PID community that's going to be built above our community, and one of the main issues that I see that a lot of these neighbors have complained about, I'm lucky enough that my driveway does not go directly on to Lariat. And, but, I mean, me and my wife, just the other day, we're standing outside with our kids, we watched a car pass another car at probably 40 to 60 miles an hour while somebody was trying to back out of their driveway. And I told my wife, I'm like, I think if we had some speed bump, something like you were mentioning, something to mitigate speed, and maybe, because I think of, um, Grandview has no driveways backing onto it, and I don't know why that, why they chose Lariat to be like a feeder, but I, I don't think it's the proper road, because if you're trying to back out of your driveway, you have kids trying to get across, there's no crosswalks, there's nothing. You can't get from one side of the street to the other, and we have kids that are walking to the bus, and so that's what I have, is I, I think that that needs to be addressed, because I am worried about my kids and other people.
Okay, thank you so much for your comment tonight.
My turn.
Come on up.
Good evening, it was recommended by Mr. Karn, I think that must be you, to one of our neighbors to come tonight to speak to this same issue.
Can you state your name?
I'm George Lukey.
Sorry, state, could you state your name and address?
George Lukey, 1956, Thoroughbred Drive.
Thank you.
Your friend Kristen?
Yeah, yep, yeah, we're all close community, actually. And we've been discussing this issue with the city for, well, since it opened. As soon as that feeder opened, the traffic volume has increased significantly, as you'd expect, but what is unexpected is the, you know, the amount of speeding and the decrease in the livability of the neighborhood is significant, you know, with all this traffic. I personally was almost T-boned about three weeks ago, there's two cars behind me trying to pass me, and, you know, just about took the nose of my car off, because they didn't see that I was turning left, because there were two cars behind me. So it's, it's pretty bad, and that's what the group of us are here tonight to speak to, and it was short notice, so it's a good representation of how severe the issue is for me, so, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brandon Hembree, I live on Lariat, 329 North, or 329 West Lariat, and again, as you guys can see, the common theme, what we're here for, and like George outlined, this is a very small amount of us that are really passionate about this. I've been told by many neighbors, I, I work from home, I do a lot of stuff in my garage, and they, I've been told by many people, I'm outside more than anybody, and I really am, I'm outside almost all day. I can testify that it's definitely not like an isolated incident like, like Matt, or, like Adam pointed out, that, like, you see a car pass something, that's daily, all day that happens, especially around the time when the high school students are getting in and out of schools. I understand, we've had some feedback by going through the proper channels and explaining to some of you, I don't know who it would be, but some of the issues that we have, but, and, and they say, well, it was planned that that's what Lariat's supposed to be, and I understand that there's plans in place, but there's also actions that can be taken place as well, like, I know you guys have said there's some, some calming ideas, but I'm just blowing the stop signs. I know that helps drastically, having a stop sign put in, and all of a sudden, it's really slow pretty close to my house, but you go down to Adam's house, and it's just like a freeway, because they have all that time to, to gain speed, and the same thing goes for the, the upper area, and there's all these cross-sections where there could be other stop signs put in that really don't hurt anybody. I was in a vacation with the family this last year in San Francisco, and I came across a street where they did all these calming methods, where they had stop signs littering, like, every couple hundred feet. People didn't have the opportunity to even speed up, and not only that, it, it deters people from a neighborhood where there are houses like mine, where I have to back up into the yard, or back up into the street, where there's other streets like Grandview where people really should be using as a filter street, that's a better off-ramp or on-ramp, this is what we call our, our street now, it's an on-ramp to the freeway. It, it, it just becomes, it's not a place where we love to live anymore, I've been there since 2013, it's not somewhere I've lived, I just moved in last year or anything, and it's, it's to the point where it's just, it's not pleasant to be there. Like myself, being outside all the time, it's, it, it's just really aggravating, you kind of get to the point where you just have to turn your eye, turn a blind eye to it, and I know it's been a while, so we've all kind of turned our blind eye to it, but it, we're kind of the point where we're seeing our children outside, and it's dangerous for them, especially, like I said, with school being back in, it's becoming, um, a little bit bothersome to let your kids play in a, in a neighborhood that they once were safe in, that's it.
Thank you so much for your comment tonight.
Hey, I'm Jason Ryrie, I live at 306, also on Lariat. Um, I've got my boy here with me, this sweet kid, he has to cross the road sometimes to get to the bus stop, and in our neighborhood, it's not uncommon for parents to not allow their children to cross the road without an adult with them. Parts of Lariat, additional context, have some twists and turns, and on a hill, cars are flying around at 40 miles an hour, and they can't even see 50 feet in front of them. Like, if you've got a little kid in there, we're just waiting for one of our young ones to get killed, not to mention the back-out problems. We're pretty frustrated. Obviously, there's a lot of measures that we can probably consider, that you've already considered. Um, one that we've discussed, that hopefully we can discuss at a later point, is there's some open land just to the north of that row of homes, that we're having some issues with builders building on, because there is such a heavy rock content, they're having a hard time getting foundations in. Maybe we could talk about a bypass route if we can't offload that traffic onto the- we just, we're really hoping that we can get onto an agenda and talk about some remediation before we have to do a funeral. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much for your comment. And I think you came a little bit late, if your comment is directly related to Fox Hollow, we're going to open comment for that later.
Jacobs Ranch.
Okay.
I'll put this down, my name is Mindy Green, I live on 2112 South Ruger Drive, so I'm actually across the ravine from this road that goes through, but this is my neighborhood and my ward, I've lived in Saratoga Springs for 22 years, been at many of these council meetings, and recognize a lot of you, and I'm sure some of you recognize me, but I love our city, and one of the things that me and my husband do is we go for a walk every single night, and we always walk down the road that now has been opened up, and we take our dog out with us, and it's to the point now where we try to avoid the road, because even when we're walking on the road, walking down the sidewalk, there are people that are stupid, and a lot of it is the teenage kids who's not coming out, but I've had my own self, as I've been coming home on the back road, I'll be going 25 miles an hour, and people don't like that we're going the speed limit, and so they will bypass us on that road, and they'll go around us, and they don't stop at the stop sign, they just keep on going all the way down the hill, and we actually had a neighbor that, bless her heart, followed them and recorded with her phone, two boys, and she stopped following them when she hit 60 miles an hour in front of the houses, and luckily for me, it happened to be someone that my daughter, or my neighbor across the street's daughter was dating, it was her boyfriend, and so I went over and gave him a piece of my mind, and told him, this is my family, these are people that I love. Um, I have also, we've had an incident in the neighborhood where kids were racing on motorcycles and go-karts, and the go-kart lost control and drove through the fence of one of the neighbors. Luckily, kids weren't in the backyard, and we would have had a tragic incident happen. But there is just very little supervision when it comes to the city, and I know for me, with the communications that I've had, a lot of it has been, this is only temporary until the Mountain View corridor goes the rest of the way, all the way through, right? And we all know that, um, we've been told it, and, and we can see that, it's, but with the addition that's going in with the gas stations that now are there, we're going to now have possibly the grocery stores on that side, um, even with the road going through, we have something that's drawing residents within the city, and some of these high school kids that might want to avoid Redwood Road, now coming the back roads to be able to hit some of these restaurants and things that are going to be placed in there, so that they don't have to deal with the clutter up here in this part of town, and so we have things that will be drawing residents on that road, and so it's not like, even once the corridor is in, the traffic will be stopped, because now the city is approving things, which we're grateful for as well, right? But we're approving things that are drawing people within the city down that road, and so we feel like, I feel like that there's been a lot done, we have had the stop signs put in, um, I know that there's been talk about possibly putting in some crosswalks that can help up those fines if the people are caught speeding through there, um, but the, the people that we see, like, I, I don't want to be having, if you know, if one of my neighbors, or my husband, or my, you know, we'd like my dog, I, I'm like, don't let her out there, because we don't want him to get hit, and we don't dare walk down this road at any time during the day, because we're afraid that we might get hit by someone there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, any more public comment? All right, we will go ahead and close public comment at this time, and like Commissioner Hill stated earlier, we do have a traffic calming report that we're going to be going over tonight, so greatly encourage you to stay and get some information on that, if you have the time for that. I really do appreciate hearing from the public on things, um, I don't live in your neighborhood, and so I don't know what's happening out there every day. I do have a teenager that drives a little fast, though, so I would appreciate if I heard from you on him, uh, I hope it's not him, though, but please come, please continue to keep coming in, please continue to keep talking to us, please continue to keep working with us, because we really can only make our city great if we do continue to work together on it, and, but, I, do you, sir, you seem to be kind of leading some of this?
Me?
Mm-hmm.
I was on the other side.
As, as you did.
Matt Harris.
Okay, do you have the, do you have contact information for people at the city?
(Inaudible)
For, for your contact information? Okay. Do you have contact information for, for the city staff, or to reach out to continue working with the city on this?
Just like, you know, I just-
Okay, and do you feel that's adequate?
There's like a order line here.
Matt, so I responded to Kristen, and just said, hey, come to Planning Commission and make comments, that there may be infrastructure or enforcement solutions that are possible. I copied Sarah, who's here, this is Sarah, and Sarah already responded and said, like, hey, we'll forward it on to the, the city appropriate departments, and, and they'll look at it.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Um, Sarah?
I just wanted to state that I will inform our city manager of all the comments, so that he's aware of those. We have passed on the emails to engineering, and, um, so, tonight, we appreciate your comments, thank you so much for commenting and sharing, we will take all those comments and pass those on to the appropriate apartments, departments, and then we will have to look at that more closely, that will, may take some studies and some time, but we can keep in touch, if you want to be a main point of contact.
Okay, all right, and once again, thank you for coming and, and giving us this information, I appreciate hearing it. Commissioner Hill?
And just, you know, the traffic calming, calming study is in our packet, so anybody can go in and pull that packet down, and it will have, I think it was an eight-
It's on the website.
So if you're not able to stay, then you can go right to the report.
(Inaudible) what the ideas are in the packet, if I can, if I can, the ideas.
You'll be able to read the traffic report, the traffic calming report that our engineer put together, it is on the city website.
Okay.
All right, okay. We will move on now to business item number one, Saratoga Hills, 7 LDS Church Preliminary Platte and Site Plan located at 1439 South Lakeview Terrace Road. Uh, Mr. Harris of BHD Architects is applicant, and we have senior planner David Gillen tonight.
Oh. Just to avoid any potential, um, I don't know, appearance of a conflict of interest, I do work for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, so I'm going to go ahead and just recuse myself on business item one.
Thank you for doing that. Okay, and we're on.
Thank you Chairwoman, thank you Commissioners. Uh, as stated, this is a preliminary platte and associated site plan, um, let's see, Sarah, can you? Great. Um, for a church at approximately 1439 South Lake Terrace Drive, uh, this property was rezoned earlier this year to the R110, uh, Single Family Residential Zoning District. As part of that, there was a development agreement that was included with the rezone. Uh, I had here listed several items that are part of that development agreement. Effectively, what that development agreement did was split this property into two separate phases, phase one being the church, and phase two coming at a later date, being the residential portion of this development. As outlined in the staff report, there were several items that were required with the phase one of this development. The applicant on this, who is here this evening, and Leif, if you want to come forward and sit here, um, they have complied with each of those requirements outlined in the development agreement for this property. Getting into the review portion of this, um, this item is largely compliant with code, there were two items, um, that are labeled as conditions of approval and were included in the findings and staff report. Um, I'll go through each of those real quickly here for you. Uh, the first of those is that the preliminary platte shall comply with all city regulations. During the review process, staff had red lines that were provided to the applicant and went through multiple submittals. These are the remainder of those red lines, the applicant is working together with the city to have those, um, addressed by the time that this platte will go to recording, um, but since there are just a handful of these red lines that are remaining, that are largely formatting, um, issues, those are listed here as conditions of approval on this platte. Uh, the other item is with regard to the site layout, uh, fairly late in the review process, this came up, um, it's that the proposed dumpster area and storage area shall be oriented away from public view. Uh, with where they're currently located on the site plan, those are located adjacent to Redwood Road. Uh, as stated, the applicant has been working with city staff and has proposed, um, that those be located at the southern end of the property, near where the pavilion and lawn area will be, um, it's just that, because of the timing of everything, um, that we weren't able to get updated plans with when this packet was going out, so that's why that's been included as a condition of approval, um, but the applicant has been working with the city on that. Other items here, um, that were included with this site plan submittal, the elevation for your review, uh, as stated, this is, um, just the church portion of this site, so here's that church, um, and its elevations, here's the landscaping associated with the site, uh, that shows the full extent of, of the property being developed here, um, and then the associated photometric plan. Each of those items are in compliance with city code. Uh, with that, if you guys have any questions for me or for the applicant, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, um, just really quick, how big is the parcel, the second parcel?
Oh, Leif, do you know? I don't know off the top of my head, I apologize.
It was in the report, I think.
Okay, I'll find, I'll dig it out of that report. Um, does the applicant have anything they'd like to add to the presentation tonight? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Leif Harris, I'm at, um, I'm, I'm from Highland, do I need to tell my whole address?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's 5636 West 10,400 North and Highland. Um, I don't have anything to add, so I'll, unless you have questions for me.
Okay, thank you. All right, and this is not a public comment item, so we will open for Commissioner Comment, Commissioner Hill?
Thank you Chair. Um, David, could you give me some sense, the only concern, everything was clean, compliant, it's pretty easy, but I have a little concern on, um, Grandview, and then as it turns into Lakeview Terrace, you've got a divider there right now that has landscaping in, and I'm concerned if you were on Grandview going east, and if you wanted to turn on a Lakeview, there's no turning lane, it looks like, and, and then, you know, on a Sunday, when everybody's coming in and they want to make a left-hand turn onto the new Lakeview, it could, it, from my perspective, it could back up to Redwood. So could you talk to me a little bit about, from the transportation perspective, how that, the corner of Lakeview and Grandview are going to come together to make that seamless? Because we know when church is coming, it all happens at once.
Yeah, I can let Scott Petrick, engineer, uh, speak on that one, he did the review for this project, and he can speak a little bit more to-
Thank, thank you David and Scott, yeah.
Scott, they're asking if the median in Grandview needs to be modified.
Scott, is the right, is the right mic on over there?
It's on now, yes.
Okay.
Um, it probably doesn't, isn't necessary to modify it, it doesn't have much of a storage length there, so it is something to be considered, but I, it would be hard to modify that with the primary movement for that road being Redwood.
Yeah, I know Grandview going east, you've got a left turning lane, and you've got a right turning lane, so it takes up part of the road. I, I just can envision during, you know, not all the time, it's just on Sundays, coming and going to church, it just doesn't seem like, the way the road is right now can handle that amount of traffic safely for people to turn, uh, I think, so that, that's just my concern.
It, it's a good comment, I mean, it's kind of a unique intersection there with-
It is.
But the primary is to keep it for Redwood traffic.
It was also just changed, like, in the last few months, to add that additional turn lane.
The last year, I can't-
Yeah. Last year?
It's been a-
There's still cones over there now, but-
Oh.
That, that's the only concern I have, is to looking forward, we, you know, we saw the traffic study, there's going to be a lot of traffic there, I just want to make sure that we look at the ability to get in and out. I know that on Lake, um, Lakeview Terrace, there's two access points, one to the north parking lot and one to the south parking lot, but I can just see a lot of congestion around that north parking lot accessibility, and, and, and then, uh, looking at, uh, Grandview Boulevard. It just seems like, it's, it's such a short distance to Redwood, that you just don't have a lot of staging. a short distance to Redwood that you just don't have a lot of staging area and timing.
Yeah, I agree. It's something we can discuss further. And just an FYI, that other parcels approximately two, four or five acres.
Okay.
Thank you.
And again, I think the plan, you know, it's compliant. As I looked at the code review, it was compliant. Everything looks good. That was the only concern that I had.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hill. Any other comment?
I just have one.
Commissioner Carr?
I didn't remember seeing anything in there about retaining walls, but it looks like from Redwood up, it's quite a bit of slope. Is there going, are there going to be retaining walls or is it enough gradual?
They're using boulders to do retaining walls and boulders that are, retaining walls that are greater than four feet in height will require a building permit. We've discussed this with the applicant. At this point in time, they're not proposing any walls that will be greater than four feet in height. But those are kind of where you see them in the landscaping section right now. Those are boulders where they're doing some retention.
Okay, so there will be boulders less than four feet in height?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other commissioner comment tonight? Sarah, Wendy stepped away. Should we wait for her before we move forward?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. We will now, I will now entertain a motion on this item.
Okay, so I move that the planning commission forward a recommendation for approval of the requested preliminary plan, site plan for the Saratoga Hills 7 church location at 1439 South Lakeview Terrace Road with the findings and conditions in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Weldon. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you for that second, Commissioner Carr. And any questions on the motion? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. We'll go ahead and ask.
Thank you, Commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Miles to rejoin us. And then can we, no, we're good on that.
So this is for the UTA park and ride that they're proposing over by, off of Pony Express. It'll actually be off of Seaside, but it's over, I'll show you. It's right here where the star is on the map. So it'll be just on the other side of the river. You'll access it off of Seaside Street. It's in institutional civic zone. It does comply with all the portions that actually it did have to comply with. That's a picture of the site plan. It's, there are no structures. It's literally just a parking lot and a road to it. There will be a monument sign up by, as you enter into it. There's the landscaping. They meet all the criteria on that as well. And photometric. Do you have any questions on that?
Commissioner Hill?
Kendall, thank you. Again, going through the code review, there were some shall comply dealing with grading and drainage and secondary water supply. I'm sure that's been addressed and it will be addressed as they move forward, but I just needed to bring that up.
Yeah, those are all the ones that engineering checks. And so I just put shall comply. I checked my.
Okay, one last, you know, comment. I think it fits within the code. Everything is pretty clean on this. The, the one concern I had is, you know, there's 54 stalls and the bus routes do not service Saratoga Springs. The bus routes will take, they will be express if I'm, as I, as I read that, to American Fork and Eagle Mountain. So we're using our land and creating, it's not going to be a big traffic hazard, but it's for, it's primarily, you know, going and not serving our community. And so that's not really a question. It's just a comment that I know as a planning commission and as a city, you know, we have been overlooked by Utah Transit Authority. And, you know, the longer we wait, the more we give our teenage kids cars. And you can never go back from a car to a bus. And as we grow, you know, we're going to see tremendous growth in the next, you know, in the next 25 years. We're going to double in size. And, you know, if, if, if we don't share that with UTA, and we have, and I know, but we just need to have more public transportation in our community. And we are now stepping up and helping Utah Transit Authority and the county to do this, but I see very little benefit. So that's just a comment and it's nothing to do with planning. It's just the message I think we need to send. Okay.
Can I add, I do want to comment on that. We, there have been public comment periods on northern Utah County transit routes happening recently. We have had council representatives both Saratoga and Eagle Mountain attend those and give comment. We did think that we had a revised bus plan funded and we were told it's not yet funded. We are requesting that they reconsider that and fund that sooner than expected. We thought that that was coming and that that would be going east to west through Saratoga from Front Runner to Eagle Mountain City Center. So it is still in the works. We don't know when that will be funded, hopefully sooner than later.
Thank you, Sarah, for that update. I just wanted to go on the record of sharing my concern as a citizen and as a commissioner that sooner than later, exactly like you said.
And, and just, just to reiterate, we are in meetings regularly. We are having discussions. We are, you know, doing everything we can to get our needs heard and understood and our growth heard and understood. And we're with UTA, U.MAG, all of those entities that work on transportation and transit.
Thank you, Sarah and Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Carr?
I just have two questions, just for my benefit. Is the county building this or is UDOT building the park and ride?
UTA.
UTA, Utah Transit Authority, okay. So I don't imagine they would be building a park and ride if there wasn't a desire to fund stops at that spot.
Applicant Sarah, she can answer some of those questions.
We're going to go ahead and invite the applicant.
She's hiding in the back.
If you can just state your name and address for, and you can use your business address. Sorry to that gentleman earlier.
No problem. My name's Carly Torres. I'm the project manager for the park and rides that will be constructed here in Saratoga Springs. Address is 66669 West 200 South in Salt Lake City, 84101. Sorry. I do hear your guys' concerns and questions. And please note, you are correct, sir. Mr. Carr?
That'll work.
Commissioner Carr, there is service that is planned for that park and ride. In addition to the park and ride, there will be two bus stops that are going to be constructed for that park and ride. And there will also be, where we'll be connecting to the, one of the new routes that will be serviced by UTA. I will concur. It's sooner than later. I can't give you a specific date. I'm sorry. But it is, it is in the works and we are working on alternatives for trans, for more public transportation down here, including potential on-demand services, express, express routes, express buses, as much as we can, especially with this park and ride being constructed.
Great, thank you. And then I have my second question. I assume that the driveway was placed off of the intersection to comply with the, the distance requirement for a driveway. Is that right?
I'm not sure.
Doesn't have to be so many feet away from an intersection?
Oh, yeah, there's distance requirements. I'm not sure why that's where it went, but.
So we create.
Yes.
Yes.
And it lines up with the, with the one across the street. They don't have offsets. Sorry.
You got it. You answered the question correctly.
Which, and it's great to have it not on Pony Express, but that leaves that little weird parcel. What, what happens with that weird parcel? Is it just landscaped space that sits there?
It is going to be just a landscaped space and also to keep it, I think that's where the detention pond is. Ryan, who is my designer?
It's well in there.
What, yes.
It's well in there, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the last question is, cars parked for a long time, there is worry of that attracting crime. Do the other park and rides in Utah County attract a greater percentage of crime?
I honestly can't give you that number nor that answer. I'm sorry. I wish I could. But I don't believe it would just be any one park and ride in County. I don't believe that they particularly attract more crime even for the longer term, if there is a longer term vehicle that is staying there. However, we do, we are still patrolling the park and rides because they are still maintained and owned, well, maintained by UTA. So as part of the land use lease agreement, that was something that we also agreed to for building in this location.
Okay, thank you.
Really great, great question, Commissioner Carr. And thank you for that. Commissioner Miles?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I just have a question. I think we've addressed some of it, but that area is really, really tight coming in and out. I mean, just, just this morning, trying to get that way to head to the Front Runner Station, I had to flip around and go back. I actually came into that lot toward the airplane park, but coming back out, I think I sat there for at least 35 cars that were coming on that. Do we have any plans? And maybe this is more to our city staff, how we're getting in and out of that, where it kind of curves a little, it's a narrow spot. I know we have plans to extend that road, but how, how are we going to have 50 plus cars coming in and in and out of that, plus buses?
Well, this is access off of Seaside. This isn't going over by the airplane. You're going to come off of Seaside off of Pony Express and it's got its own access to it.
Also, buses will not be going into.
They won't be going.
No, sir. They will be staying on Pony Express Parkway. Also, for the Pony Express Parkway, it will be getting widened and re-stripped as part of this park and ride project. And there will be a fully signalized intersection at Pony Express Way and Seaside Street.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Miles. Any other commissioner comment? Right, we will go ahead and entertain a motion.
I move that the planning commission forward a recommendation for approval of the requested site plan for the UTA Park and Ride Pony Express located at 795 East Sand Dollar Way with the findings and conditions in the staff report.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hill. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
A second from Commissioner Weldon. Any questions on the motion? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Right. All right, we'll go ahead and now move to business item number three, Fox Hollow N4 Residential Preliminary Plat and Site Plan located approximately at Village Parkway and Lawson Avenue. David Kelly of D.R. Horton is applicant and senior planner, Austin Roy.
Thank you, Commissioners. So this is neighborhood four of Fox Hollow. It's just off of Redwood Road, down in the south part of the city. You can see that here as so indicated. It's close to Wildlife Boulevard, Village Parkway. There's the Nautical Boat Club, just as a point of reference, and the golf course there. So this development is going to be, they're proposing 308 dwelling units in total, of which 136 of those are proposed to be townhomes. The Fox Hollow Master Development Agreement does allow them to go up to potentially 352 units of density, no, 335, I'm sorry. So they're, they're actually proposing less than the maximum that they could on the total density. However, the maximum amount of townhomes that they're allowed is 136, and that's exactly what they're proposing on this. So overall density is 6.83 units per acre. The MDA allows up to 7.06 units per acre on this piece of land. You'll notice in your packet that there were several items of shall comply. And so I'll, I'll go through each one of those. So the first one was for landscaping. They just were missing some, some pine, some evergreens. So that's an easy fix. We've redlined that and made that a condition of the staff report that they need to provide additional evergreen trees.
So, Austin, is that?
Where it said that we're requiring 102 evergreens and right now they have 49 in the plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so that would be that part of the staff report. And then, let's see, planned unit development shall comply. So because this is in the planned unit development, I'm going to be skipping back and forth between visuals just to, you know, so it helps pertain to what we're talking about. This area in all of Fox Hollow, in fact, is built on the hillside. And so because of that, when the city originally created this area, it was, it was in the PUD zone, which is a planned unit development, the purpose of which is to protect the hillsides, cluster homes and neighborhoods. And so because of that, homes in this area are granted, you know, smaller, smaller setbacks, smaller lot widths and those types of things. And our code does also allow variations to any zoning standard. Any, any standard in the under zone, they can request a variation of up to 25%. So, for example, they, they want to request a front side setback variation for this, for the townhomes. So the, the standard townhome setback is 20 feet. They're requesting 15 feet, which would be 20, you know, a 25% reduction in that setback. So that is one of their requests. The other requests that they're, that they're, that they have with this is they are requesting.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
The code allows them to request a 25% deviation. Does the city have an obligation to, to accept that request?
Rulon, yeah.
That's a little bit up for debate. We do have a master development agreement that entitles them to a certain density. And we do have language in that agreement that says the city will not prevent their entitlements from occurring. So it's up for debate, you know, can they achieve that without that? That's a good.
And then another question that goes along with that. Charlie, if you're done.
You have a good.
Is it my understanding that city council would need to approve those street sidewalks and the setbacks? So it goes through the judicial?
Right, that's correct. So the commission is making a recommendation on their requests. They have a request for longer block lengths and they have requests for the reduced setback, but the city council will be the final decision on that.
Yeah.
So we're primarily looking more at the administrative within zoning and code, correct?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So that, those, those, these variations would be city council decisions. Your job is, you know, more or less to see, does it meet the code? So those are outside of the code, but I, I want to highlight them, you know, for the purpose of what they're asking here. And Sarah already touched, based on one of the other ones is block length is, is another big one on. So we have a maximum block length of 1,000 feet. That's our standard in Title 19. They're requesting longer block lengths on this. So in particular, the street on the top of the screen here, that one would be, they're requesting 1,240 feet in length on that. Again, that's a 25% deviation or variation from our code.
Austin, why do we have that code? What does that do for us?
Yeah, so the point of the, I mean, the main purpose of the code and, and the intent of the code is to allow reduced setbacks so that you could put homes closer together and thus, thus reduce the need to build retaining walls and have steeper roads and things like that on the hillside. So it's, it's trying to encourage you to put the development in a smaller area to have a less of an impact on the side.
Is it also fair to say that?
A super long block looks really ugly?
That, that is a, you know, I, there's one, one thing I always learned, I learned very quickly in planning is you can't regulate ugly. So we can only regulate what's in the code. So I, some people may not like.
To live in England, they got really long blocks. It's not great.
There is some, there is some, like, some reasons behind that too, though. So they, because of the grades up here, they would, they, they want to reduce how many retaining walls they're building. And if they would have done the shorter block lengths, they would have had to do steeper roads, which doesn't comply at the intersections and stuff. So in the wintertime, they'd be sliding all over the place. So there, there is some reason, you know, engineering reasons behind it as well. So those are the variations. I'm going to go back this screen.
Can we add, so the, and we kind of put it in the staff report just a little bit why they're asking for that variation. So because of the grade, and did you cover that? Sorry.
Yeah, we just covered that. Grade and retaining walls.
Because of the grade, so they have, there's certain areas where they put them. If you put it mid-block, it's really steep, but it's also steep on how you approach the, the upcoming street. You know, if you've ever bottomed out your car because the street is like to the, the transition between the upcoming street and the flat street, right? So it's, they would have a very difficult, difficult time meeting the engineering standard. So it's, they would have a very difficult, difficult time meeting the engineering standard at the street transitions, like this street and the street coming up. I hope that helps. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, um, let's see. So moving on, we're down to nineteen oh nine, off-street parking. So one of the things of, of our, of our Title Nineteen is we, we have parking standards for everything. So, you know, for restaurants, for townhomes. However, we don't have a parking standard for community parks. And so that is something that would be subject to the City Council approving. Again, I'm just highlighting this. They, they have nine parking stalls there for the proposed park that they're showing. So again, that would be subject to the City Council's approval. Let's see, go, moving on, site and architectural design standards. So I did, we did highlight this, when they submitted their materials originally, they submitted elevations for six-unit townhomes. However, this, these plans actually only have four-unit and five-unit townhomes. So that was just kind of like what they had on file. They have since, they weren't able to get it in the packet on time, but they have since submitted additional elevations for the four-unit and five-unit townhomes, and have addressed the red lines that staff had on that. So among those red lines were, they had to show exterior lighting, and then also that they needed to have at least three colors and three materials on the front elevations. And so they've-
They have to be on the street sides.
On the street sides, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, on the back, they can only, they can just do two materials and two colors. So that, and let's see, and then finally, I think, yeah, everything else was a complies. So those were the shall complies that was, that was in the staff report. This is the site plan. As you can see, so the, the way that this site plan is shown on the screen is kind of disorienting. North is kind of like the bottom-left corner of the screen. So Redwood Road is up on the, on that road on the top there. There is a commercial portion of Neighborhood Four, which these developers are not developing. It'll come at a later time. Different developers are developing that portion of land. So that, that big white space that you see there above the townhomes, that's the commercial portion. And then as it moves away from Redwood Road, the density decreases. So it goes from town, you know, commercial, then to townhomes, and then as you get higher up the, up the hill, it's going to single-family lots. These are some of the elevations that they've submitted. They've submitted these for the four-unit and five-unit townhomes, as I mentioned earlier. Each, each elevation has two different wraps, basically color schemes, and then they have three different styles. So they have the Craftsman, they have the farmhouse, and the modern farmhouse. So that's an example of what they've submitted. You can see those red dots there. Those are lighting that they've been required to show. Because it is on the hillside, we have a dark-skY compliance ordinance that they have to be full cutoff and downward-directed lights. So that's what they're showing here. Landscaping, you can see on the right-hand side there, that's the overall landscape plan. The darker areas on the screen are where the landscaping is going. A lot of that landscaping is on, on the west side, on that same street where the school is. And then there, there are a couple trail corridors in the middle that connect the upper part of the property down to the lower, and then landscaping around the multifamily housing, as well as a park on the south end of the development. And on the left-hand side of the screen, that's the park, yeah.
So HOA-maintained park?
That's, yeah, great question. So this would be an HOA-maintained park. One of the things, and one of the conditions in your staff report, is that that park is to be a community park for the Fox Hollow neighborhood as a whole, not just, not just the townhomes. So-
Okay.
It's a community park.
How large is the park? How many acres?
Um, I believe it's about two and a half acres, approximately.
Okay.
But technically, these HOA parks are private property for members of the HOA, even though nobody blocks usage, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, that's typically what it is. I mean, what is to stop someone from coming and using that? I don't know, you know? Technically, it's for, it's for the HOA. Some of the amenities, I'll just, you know, quickly go over those. They have some pickleball courts, they have a couple of, two playgrounds, some pavilions, and some horseshoes, and the swing set proposed for this. So when staff was looking at this, we felt like it was a fairly large park with lots of amenities. Staff is recommending that they maybe reconsider their amenities and maybe add a restroom. They feel like that would be a good benefit for the community, you know, for parents that bring their kids here and, you know, they need a restroom or whatever. So that is one of the recommendations in the staff report. We, and the conditions, we, we wrote it in such a way that you can either choose to, you know, it's your choice whether you want to recommend that or not, but that's, that was just what staff felt.
One space per, on the road? Or where is that?
Oh, yeah. So that's a great question. So on the, on the top left-hand side of the screen there, that kind of that white area above the park there, those, that's where the parking stalls are. So there's nine parking stalls there. They're angled parking, and they do back onto that road there. That road, I believe, is, is that a private road, Jeff? No, that one's a public road. So it, we have, we have a standard for how they, how many they can have. So they originally had ten parking stalls there, but our, our code, our, our standards only allow nine in a row. And so that's why they've, they've put nine here.
Austin, why does our code only allow nine?
That's just what the standard states. I, I'm not sure. It just, it just says a maximum of nine.
Okay.
It was kind of double and partial. I was coming in, and we looked at block lengths and what would make sense, and if it gets in excess of that, it, it like covers the whole street, and it presents other problems with utilities and things, so they just chose to limit it.
And it is a neighborhood park supposedly, even though it's open. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, correct. Yeah.
Commissioner Wildin?
So there is parking-
Austin, Commissioner Wildin wants to-
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Finish that comment.
I was just going to say, while we're on the topic of parking, there is other parking spread out throughout the development for the multifamily housing. They're required to provide point-two-five parking stalls per unit or per bedroom, and so, and within two hundred feet of each unit. So they, they have done that on the rest of the development. Yeah.
Great.
Commissioner Wildin?
Yeah, just, if you could help me, I, I want to zoom out and look at what decision we're making. I knew you, you brought that up earlier. I just wanted some clarity on this.
Yeah.
So they have permission to build on a hundred and seventy-one lots? And we've already authorized that in the past. Is that correct?
So they-
That was just single-family?
Yeah, so they're allowed, so they're proposing a hundred and seventy-two single-family-
Oh.
And a hundred and thirty-six townhomes. Altogether, three hundred and eight.
Okay, so three hundred and eight. Now, we're not deciding tonight whether they're allowed to build three hundred and eight on, we're not, they're not, we're not deciding if they can build. We're deciding some specific details about how it's built.
Correct.
So if I was opposed tonight to this being built, it wouldn't matter?
Yeah, that's correct. So thi- this development has, has a master development agreement, and they are, the, the landowner is entitled to have up to three hundred and thirty-four, actually, units, but, you know? So, so it is, it is a, a legal document. They are, they are allowed to have that amount.
So the-
We can't, we can't deny them their right to develop that.
So the decision to allow them to build was done previously at other meetings?
Correct. And that would have been done with the Fox Hollow a, as a, as a whole. So there are, there are several neighborhoods in Fox Hollow. This is Neighborhood Four, and-
Austin, do you know when Fox Hollow was vested?
Um, Sarah probably knows that better than I do.
Originally-
Twenty thirteen.
In two thousand-
Twenty thirteen.
Right. But, sorry, it was redone. Twenty thirteen, it was redone. It was originally two thousand and three, redone in two thousand and thirteen, and then extended a couple years ago. So the original two thousand and three and two thousand and thirteen document showed five hundred and fifty-two units in here, and in two thousand and nineteen, the applicant actually reduced that. And they also were required to put twenty, so the, so the two thousand and thirteen document had twenty acres of commercial and five hundred and fifty-two units. The applicant and property, the property owners chose to reduce that, and they had a master development agreement amended in two thousand and nineteen and shifted ten acres of the, ten of the twenty acres, so split the commercial. So kept ten acres of a commercial here, reduced the town, uh, sorry, not just the townhomes, reduced the density to three hundred and thirty-five from five hundred and fifty-two, and shifted ten acres of commercial to the west, up by the future Mountain View Corridor. So that all happened in two thousand and nineteen. The document was extended late last year, and in that extension, the city was able to negotiate that they dedicate the property for the park. The land had not yet been dedicated to the city. So the, the city required with that extension that the land for the future twenty-acre park be dedicated, so the city then could take ownership of that. We had not had ownership until that point. And then we also required dedication of land for the Mountain View Corridor, which will help us as we, you know, try to get funding and, and advance the expansion, extension of the Mountain View Corridor.
Which park was donated to the city?
There's, just across the street from this development, there's a twenty acre, more than twenty acres, there's a future city park. So just right here, this is about twenty-one acres, I believe, and that is part of the master development agreement, but it's meant to be a city-owned and city-improved park, but we had not yet owned the land.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Sorry, Commissioner Wildin, thank you for letting me interrupt you on that.
No, no problem. You know, I, I come down Village Parkway almost every day, and taking a left turn is, is really difficult, but I'm not here to decide whether it's going to be built or not. And it, you know, will impact my traffic. They have, they have permission, we've, it's been authorized before that they can build this. The question is tonight, right?
Right.
Whether, which, how they're going to build it. So I just want to make sure that we're really clear, that we're not thinking that we can decide if we're going to build or not. That's not our right at this point, is that correct?
That's a correct statement, yeah. You, as planning commissioners, you don't have the ability to, or even the City Council doesn't have the ability to decide whether or not they can build this at that density.
I think.
And just to point out too, the general plan does designate this, this area as high-density residential as well. So that is part of our general plan.
Is there precedent where a piece of land has been entitled a certain number of units, but they're unable to build that many units and still comply with all the other standards? Like block length and setbacks?
Yeah.
Well, variations don't come up very often, so they come up in the PUD overlay zone, which you don't actually see very of, often. We have, we no longer do it, so no new developments come under the planned unit development. What you've been seeing is planned community, and we get variations all the time in that. Under the planned community district, they can come in and propose their setbacks. So we do, as a city, have a precedent for giving variations, just maybe under different Under standard zoning, we don't give variations. So if they don't have a PUD overlay, or they're not, they're not in the planned community zone, we don't give variations.
Okay, so the precedent set is that if they're complying with the number of lots they're entitled to, we will give variation?
We have in other phases of Fox Hollow. So in other phases of Fox Hollow, variations have been granted in multiple phases.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's common to grant a variation unless it's like a, a safety, like a life or, life or safety concern. Maybe that could be a reason why you would want, we may want to reconsider a variation, but other than that, it's, it's quite common to grant a variation as long as it's reasonable and helps the overall development and the community as a whole. Let's see, where were we? Okay, so landscaping, they did also provide an open space plan. So Fox Hollow is interesting. Sarah's already touched base on this, like, there's been several areas of open space that have been dedicated, twenty acres that she talked about. Some of these, there are some trails adjacent to this property, so along Redwood Road, there's an existing Redwood Road Trail, and then to the south, there is an existing trail connection. That's the purple you see on the screen there. So there have been some, some open space that's been provided already. They are required to provide open space for the townhomes. In addition to that, the, the retention ponds will also be considered open space. You can see that kind of in the turquoise color, and then the reddish color there. So this is their overall open space plan. It does meet the requirements of the MDA, which, which they're required to provide. There's some lighting that, on the left, you see the lighting that'll be on the townhomes. On the right, that's some of the lighting that, that's the lighting that will be used on the pickleball courts, for the athletic field there. I think that gets me to the end of everything I have in the slides here. You will see that, you know, we, we have a number of conditions here, larger than most things, but I've covered those throughout the presentation. So please let me know if you have any questions. I believe we also do have the developer here tonight. Do you have any questions for them?
Can you, can you explain the condition on the, having a bathroom in the park one more time, just so we are very clear on that?
Correct, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Some of the comments we've heard from the public over time is when we have a park with a lot going on, that maybe people from outside the neighborhood are coming to use it, or a little bit further in the neighborhood, not immediately right by the neighborhood, is the homes next to the park end up getting people knocking on their doors, saying, can I use your bathroom? Can my two-year-old use your bathroom? Can my five-year-old use your bathroom? You know, and so with the amount of programming that's in this park, I mean, you have pickleball, you have two playgrounds, you have picnics, you have pavilions, tables, trash cans, that's a full-on party. You know, you can have a six-year-old birthday party here, but then you wouldn't have a restroom. So then where, you know, even if you live here, even if, if you're four streets away, you're, you know, sending, you know, your six-year-old's friend four streets away to use the restroom. So the comment came from a city staff perspective, just based on feedback we've gotten over time. They, in order to do that, they would need, we have a requirement in the code that no item can be more than twenty-five percent of your points. So they would also need an exception to that, so that the restroom could have more than twenty-five percent of the points. So it, I mean, it's up to you. You can discuss that, but, but really, the staff feedback is based on comments we've gotten over time.
Okay. Do we have other HOA-maintained parks that do have a restroom in them like this?
I have one on that. So I live near Eagle Park. It's got an, that's an HOA park up against the lake. It has bathrooms, but the HOA keeps them locked. And even people in the neighborhood don't have their fobs on them and don't use them, and they kind of go into disrepair, and they're junky. Do you know if the staff, the stipulation that this bathroom be included also comes with a requirement that they're open to the public?
We, that's, that's a fair comment. So that would really be up to the HOA, honestly. Because it, you know, it's, it's there, it's their restroom, so that would be up to the HOA. So are you saying that you can access it if you have a fob? So if you're part of the HOA, you can access it?
In the HOA park in my neighborhood, you can only access it if you have a fob, and because of that, almost no one uses it, and things are dumped.
Yeah. So to, I mean, I, so I don't know that we can mandate that the HOA keep it open to the public. I don't know that we can do that, but they could probably, you know, they can keep it open to HOA users. Back to Commissioner Sprossy-Burn's question, we don't necessarily, off the top of my head, however, most HOA parks are serving like one townhome community. So the one that Commissioner Kern mentioned does serve a pretty large HOA, and this, where it would be serving more than just the townhomes, it'd be serving the single-family homes as well. And then I, I don't know if it will be open to the entire HOA or not. I haven't heard an answer on that.
Okay, and so on the, on the recommendations on the staff report, if we are making a positive recommendation of approval, does the, does that include the recommendation of a restroom in this bathroom? Or, sorry, a restroom in this park?
Yeah, let me see, it's item number nine, condition nine. The park shall slash shall not include a restroom to accommodate the park programming. So you can modify your motion. Whoever makes the motion can, could say shall not, like if Commissioner Kern felt strongly about it, based on his experience. if Commissioner Karn felt strongly about it based on his experience, he could, you know, choose that motion or vice versa.
Can I, can I ask a question? Where in here do I see the nine parking stalls at the park?
Number four.
Yeah.
Okay. Should I be proposed? Um, I'm concerned that with two pickleball courts and a big park, that when people use it, it's going to be more than nine cars. People are going to be parking in the neighborhood. Do you guys have any guidance from other parks or other situations to help think about nine parking spots?
Pickleball is fairly new. I know it's not new, but I mean, in our parks. So I don't actually have, uh, we have our own, you know, city pickleball courts, but we don't necessarily have a standard of how much parking you should have. So off the top of my head, I, I wouldn't be able to answer that.
Mount Saratoga Park has, uh, two pickleball courts, and it's very interesting because they have a large lot, but nobody uses that. They just park along the street closest to the pickleball. So the closest distance to the pickleball court is where people are parking.
But this has almost no street access, other than where the parking lot is.
Yeah.
So the people are just going to be parking in front of home.
So you'd have to park on the?
And it, we would expect people would walk, you know, that not everybody would be using that. Well, it's not the same as a city park, right?
Yeah.
Um, so.
I drive to Eagle Park, it's four doors away.
Yeah, so the one, the one that Commissioner Hill mentioned, and I, um, there is a parking lot with quite a bit of parking, and it's empty all the time.
Yeah.
So, but the on-street parking isn't overwhelming. I mean, eh, eh, at a given time, there's five to six cars there, so.
Well, you, you have at the pickleball and the covered area, but it seems to me the dog park has more cars in front of that than anything else, but.
So, sorry, we don't have any data or statistics on it to help with that question.
The closest comparison I can see is, uh, off of Grandview, there's an HOA park with a disc golf course I play every day. And, um, and that has like an on-street, just like this is proposed, just some spots that kind of border the street. And, um, I mean, it's commonly not sufficient. If anyone has, like, any church or community group does something there, it's not enough.
Yeah. Commissioner Mann, did you have some comment?
Yeah, I just want to expound upon what Commissioner Karn is saying. You know, when we have 308 lots in a community, and, you know, eh, in our, in our packet, it says, well, that we expect that this park will be used mostly in the summertime. There's also Fox Hollow Park that is up in that community. We like to take our dog there. I don't live in Fox Hollow, but I know that a lot of people do. And there, there's, ah, gosh, there's more than nine parking spots. There's quite a few more than nine, and it's consistently full, summer and winter. Being that that area is on a slope, kids love to go sledding there. I don't see people letting their kids trudge through the snow for 35 acres, across 35 acres to go to the park. They're, they're going to want to drive. Nine parking stalls for 308 lots seems ridiculous.
I, I think one of the challenges is, um, well, okay, eh, uh, sorry. We will also in the future have the city park, right? And that, and we, and that's not programmed yet, so we don't know what that will look like.
And it's right at the bottom of this page, right?
Correct, bottom right.
And it's a big city park with lots of parking.
It will be.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, a, a 20 acre park, Neptune Park is 11 acres, so double the size of Neptune Park. Uh, Patriot Park right now is 25 to 30 acres, so just a little bit smaller than Patriot Park. But it does have a steep slope, like you're talking about, so that has to be considered as we, um, you know, as that comes online.
And will it have pickleball? That's a big draw for people.
Right. And, uh, I don't, we don't know the answer. It hasn't been programmed. So I, I think that you can certainly make whatever recommendations regarding parking.
And at this point, we will now invite the applicant to add any additional information to the presentation tonight. Please state your name and address for the record.
David Kelly, 12351 South Gateway Park Place, Suite D100, Draper, Utah. So Commissioner Wilden, um, as part of this development going in, we are improving, uh, Village Parkway and Redwood Road to, for an intercept, for a lighted intersection. So that is part of, of what we are doing.
Can you put some bathrooms there?
Some bathrooms? Yeah. And then we have this, the, the restroom comment came up kind of at the, at the late stage of the game. So we have had some conversations with the master HOA. We're trying to figure out logistics on how we could maintain it, how it could be maintained, how it's not just, you know, here's a key fob that, what kid is going to be carrying a key fob? So we're, we're willing to entertain that, but, you know, per the code right now, it's not required to meet the amenity points, but we are willing to entertain that and figure, try to figure something out with the city staff.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. All right. We are going to open for public comment, um, and I am going to turn off everyone else's mics, and we're going to follow Quorum and raise our hands appropriately. And be very polite and respectful to everyone tonight. So, with that said, we'll open public comment. There's a three-minute limit to public comment. If what you are commenting on has already been stated, please, let's try and limit our repeat comments. And that is all. And state your name and address for the record, and if you could wait till Ms. Wendy has the timer going. You can state your name and address, though.
Okay. My name is Jacob Belk. I live at 3112 South Hollow Way. Wanted to start out on behalf of all of those here on the community, thank you for your volunteer work on the planning commission. We join you in wanting to make Saratoga Springs a, a great place to, to live. I don't think that the current plan meets those requirements, and I, I want to point out and address a couple of things briefly that were mentioned. So just because a city requirement on, for example, block length makes it difficult for D.R. Horton to put in that block length, doesn't mean we have to grant exceptions to existing city code on how long we want the block lengths to be and the visual appeal of the neighborhood. And, uh, if it makes it difficult, that's not our problem, that's the engineer's problem, and they may have to adjust their plans. Just because they're able to build, you know, some maximum number of units on the lot, doesn't mean that they have to, right? And it doesn't mean that, uh, you know, we have to approve, you know, we collectively here have to approve every single thing that they, they put forward. As part of the master, as part of the development agreement that was signed in 2023, the Regional Park One, uh, there that's right next to this development, was supposed to be finished before the 2,000th unit, uh, within the whole Fox Hollow neighborhood was finished. And I would like to know how close are we to that 2,000th unit, excuse me, the 2,000th unit being occupied? Additionally, as part of that, uh, master development agreement, the landowners, uh, were supposed to pay upfront the 2023 SID, uh, assessment fees, and I would like to know whether those have been paid, uh, as well. Um, and those are some additional areas that we need to be careful about, uh, investigating as the, as the city planning commission. Uh, I'll let others talk about the impact on the school and the safety. We have real concerns about Swainson Avenue and kids crossing there. It's already a very dangerous area for our kids. Uh, a couple of things to just put kind of in your minds here. Fox Hollow neighborhood is already quite dense. There are already three neighborhoods there. Uh, it's 10, 11, 12, that are already at 10 units per acre. And so, uh, you know, in my mind, we've already met, well met, kind of the density requirements or of what might be required of a neighborhood. Uh, this would be by far one of the most, uh, you know, unappealing developments that far south in the city, and it really doesn't make sense to put that much density far away from any sort of, you know, uh, restaurant or any sort of retail, any sort of public transit. It's way down south on Redwood Road, and it doesn't match the, the rest of the, the community there. Thank you and appreciate your time.
Thank you. We appreciate your comment tonight.
Norman Kingsford, uh, 3124 South Forest Avenue, Saratoga Springs. Summer resident here, Sage Hills. Many of us moved for the lower density area. So this proposed townhome project does significantly change that. And like Jacob said, just because it's allowed to be done, doesn't mean it has to be done. One of the, uh, concerns with this is recently, or a few years back, there was a fire, the Lake Mountain Fire, um, and evacuation routes were inadequate because Redwood is the only road. The way that this is planned with that long strip, there could be, um, even more impactful because of the evacuation route, but also the townhomes as well. Large increases in the density in the small area can also affect home values, um, decrease them. So we're asking for all this to be considered, um, as well. So thank you.
Thank you. You can move that down. There you go.
Um, my name is Olga Roberts. I live on 223 West Cedar Grove Lane, Saratoga Springs. So this is going to be like literally right in, like, across, right near by me. This is all new to me, so it's first time here, but, um, with this being here, um, we already have an issue with, um, the Sage Hill. Everybody parking in that little area, you know, always, when I park out, you know, people are parking on this side of the street and with those houses being there, and then people parking on that side and trying to pick up their kids. I mean, that's already going to be an issue, um, because of how small that, unless you, you know, it's not going to do much about that. My kids play in that area all the time. Like I said, someone had said about that hill, I think it was Sarah. I think you were saying that, you know, kids like to go down that slide all the time. Like, if anything happens and they have to get rid of that, you know, when we go sledding and things like that, I mean, it's like ruining kids' thing, you know, life. So, um, like I said, this is all new to me. I don't think this should be done personally, but you know, it's, I think a lot of people are just, they're going to be moving away or things like that because of this situation. So that's, sorry.
Thank you for your comment tonight. Thank you for coming.
I'm Angela Hansen, 3173 South Hollow Way here in Saratoga Springs. I recognize what Commissioner Wilden has already said, that there is going to be homes built, whether we want them to or not. I agree that we need to continue to expand to meet the needs of Saratoga Springs, but this area is already very, very busy. I don't know if any of you have children that attend Sarat, the elementary school here, but there is one entrance into that school. There's two technically, but we are only allowed to use one when dropping children off because the traffic flow is already inhibited. I think there needs to be more consideration in regards to the traffic flow, not just a light down at Village Parkway and Redwood, but also at the school. It needs to be widened. You can't expect the flow of a school that already has 30 kids per class to then accommodate high-density housing and the traffic associated with entering and exiting a local school. About a year ago, I can't remember which commissioner I spoke with, but there was originally plans for the park right across the street. And we were told that it, the plans that were going to be put into that park were moved somewhere else because this side of town wasn't prepared for the amount of traffic that would be needed for this particular side of town. If you're going to be putting in 300 more residences, how can we expect a park to not also add to that traffic? We need to make some considerations, so not only the park that's been promised can be fulfilled, but that it can be accessed in a way that is efficient and not going to make that traffic worse. It's the number one concern in Saratoga Springs is our traffic. But if we're putting more houses further south as opposed to the center of town, we're just contributing to the problem. We already have a single lane down there on Redwood Road. It would need to be expanded even further, not just for the elementary school that my kids, well, did go to. We pulled them out to homeschool because it was too packed. Um, or the one further down in town. They're both already at capacity. We can't put, we can't allow for those restrictions to be given, or those exceptions to be given, if it means the housing is so dense that it can't accommodate for those that are around us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ally Lambert, and I live at 3267 South Red Wolf Drive. Um, thank you for your work. We appreciate what you do, and part of the reason that I moved to Saratoga Springs was probably the same reason many of us are here. We value the opportunity to be involved in the planning of a city early on. I mean, that is so cool to be an early planner and to get a say in exactly what you value. And, um, just in the last week, we've had two crashes right there that significantly, um, impacted traffic. We had, there was a helicopter that came, and, uh, police officers were there drafting traffic. Those incidents happen just days apart. I think a light certainly would be beneficial. Having said that, the infrastructure right there with just Redwood Road is insufficient to support such high-density housing. Additionally, as Olga and Angela have said, we value our children's, um, experience most, and I think having high-density housing right across the street from a elementary school is irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Belk, 3112 South Hollow Way. Again, thank you for your, for your service. I'm going to add on to some of the comments about the concerns for the density and how it's going to relate to the school. I sub in Alpine School District. Love subbing in this school district and the schools in Saratoga Springs. I focus primarily on Sage Hills. What these pictures don't show you, what we've mentioned, is that this is right across the street from Sage Hills Elementary. There are already several portals that the students have to use, one of which is for PE. Okay, so in the winter, when we're indoors, they're in a portal for PE. Um, it's very crowded, so most of my classes that I sub for have 32 up to 34 students per teacher. Um, and so, you know, 300 plus more units right across from the school is definitely going to increase. So I want to know what the city is doing to think about how to accommodate all of these, you know, young students that are going to be now going to Sage Hills that live in, in this area, and how we're going to support the teachers and this infrastructure at the school with that growth. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Chad Palmer. I live at 3229 South Red Wolf Drive. Um, thank you for, um, having public input, um, for us today to share what we're feeling and thinking. So far, I haven't heard anybody get up and say how awesome the public thinks that this is, and that should be a real red flag. Um, I'm a retired fire medic, so I've actually been the guy calling in the helicopter to land and for traffic accidents like we just had recently. Expect more of that, uh, especially with this going in, and, and it's still going to happen anyway, it's just it's going to get worse. So we need a light at that intersection. And I'm a biker, so I'm that guy on the blue motorcycle, um, that legally by state lock and come between your cars. But a lot of people, um, a lady mentioned earlier, people are just being dumb. They're not paying attention, they're not driving, they're not watching for kids, and they're coming down that hill way too fast. So, um, all the traffic issues that everybody was talking about in the first segment, thank you again for giving us a dedicated time for Fox Hollow. Um, just imagine more of that and worse as, as the town grows. So, um, looking at 308, uh, let's add, let's say both two drivers and a home, so that's actually 618 more vehicles on that road. Um, and then if they have teenagers, they start driving. Um, so I'm, I'm not against homes in that area. As, as previously mentioned, uh, we expected homes to come in there, but let's have actual homes, single-family dwelling and no-town homes, uh, for obvious reasons. Mentioned about the, Norman mentioned about the home values dropping. Yeah, I think the average is about 7%, not good. Um, parking lot spills out into the Valley View Drive and the neighborhood, um, with it's only nine parking spots for the park, I think that's a huge problem, too. We're already having issues up on the top one. Um, winter, summer, like, people are in the road, and there's just not enough width, so that road needs to be widened, too. Um, again, thank you for giving, letting us have, uh, feedback on that. Um, I'm, I'm not against homes there, there's, it's inevitable. Um, unless you guys probably want to put in a huge park, that would be awesome. Uh, I'd volunteer my services down there, teach kids like CPR and stuff like that, but, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ed Bailey, um, owner of the Fox Hollow. And I, I've heard a lot of the comments in here, and I appreciate the comments coming in. Uh, we've owned Fox Hollow, majority of Fox Hollow We've owned Fox Hollow, majority of Fox Hollow for about twenty years, so we go way back. One neighborhood's been sold off at a time, and every time we come in with a neighborhood, they all say the same thing. We can't have this density come in here. It's crazy. We won't be able to get around. And every single time, everyone sitting here, I'm sure talking today, is in that neighborhood that just came in. The two main access roads through Fox Hollow are Wildlife and Swanson Avenue, Village Parkway. Swanson Boulevard was put in. We put that in. We put in all the Fox, the Wildlife and Village Parkway. And Swanson gives access to the church and to the school we participate in. The access is gonna be granted so much more coming up in the next few years. You're gonna see UDOT putting in a one-point-five billion dollars of roads in Saratoga area. Right up above on the Mountain View Corridor, it's gonna be a four-lane highway going in there, connected with Village Parkway going right up to it. So sixty seconds from any one of their garages here, they're on a four-lane highway. And Redwood Road's gonna be expanded, going past our Fox Hollow. So you're gonna have a four-lane highway down there, and a four-lane highway up above. I think it'll give plenty of access to any additional homes that are going in there. The complaint, the complaint about the townhomes, I bet a majority of the people here, in the last ten years, they had a first home that they had to get into. We, we gotta allow these kids to get into homes. As Trump's even bringing up, you've gotta talk about a fifty-year mortgage just to, just to assist on getting kids into homes. There's gotta be a starter home, and I, I hope that everybody sitting here isn't saying, "Not in my backyard." Guess what? They were there ten years ago within the last ten years. I just wanna, you know, we're trying to be open. We're trying to accommodate. Each time again, a neighborhood's been opened up, it's, it's actually worked. They've been able to get around. The density's worked. The traffic has worked. Yeah, there's a lot coming in here, no more than most neighborhoods that are in Fox Hollow. So you've got some townhomes in there, but guess what? They're driving, uh, they got access directly onto Redwood Road, going through the middle of it. So we know that we've got good access going through it. We appreciate the commissioners, all you commissioners in here for all the work that you do. We appreciate it very much. And Sarah, we've worked with for twenty years now. Thank you. We appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey, can I just clarify? You're the landowner for Fox Hollow, but De'Er Horton is the developer.
Correct. They're buying it from us.
Okay.
So, the sale's going through on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I think not, not for now. We'll go ahead and finish with public comment at this point. Thank you.
McKay Mortensen, 3219 South Greyhound Road in Fox Hollow. I would have to disagree heavily with, with the gentleman that just spoke. There are no townhomes in, anywhere near this area of Saratoga Springs. There's, there's a couple, a handful by the golf course, right there at, by the clubhouse. Then if you go to wander, that's, that's the next nearest set of townhomes. So to say that this won't just, you know, impact all the traffic, that's just incorrect. That there's not high-density housing in this area. So they're all single-family homes, aside from, from what's proposed here. So I won't reiterate everyone else's comments and waste your time on that. If it is that, I just think it's gonna be a mess. We'll just leave it at that. I don't think this should be approved. If you think it's appropriate, we, I think we would love to have a little bit of feedback, what direction we should go. If, if you guys can't just deny this because of public input, if you could send us where to go, I think we would greatly appreciate that because I believe most of us would like to speak with whoever we need to at the city to change the plans. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment tonight. Okay, seeing no other public comment, we'll go ahead and close public comment and... If we can have Austin rejoin us, and if the developer would like to rejoin us as well. We're gonna move into Commissioner comment at this time.
I have a question for city staff. Is there a long-term transportation plan that solves the signal request? A signal at Redwood and, is it? Village Parkway?
Yeah, so as part of the conditions for this project, with Phase One, we're requiring the full intersection improvements. UDOT is responsible for installing, and they will pay for that signal. But the developer is responsible for putting in three lanes, three, three lanes in the eastbound direction. So in addition to the, you know, now there's two. There's one and a half, basically. It goes from one to, to two. They're required to put three, and then on the other side in Mallard Bay, they'll put two, an additional lane, so there'll be three total. So as part of Phase One of the development, they're required to do those improvements. In addition, they're putting a four-way stop at Swanson and Village Parkway, as well as two rapid-flashing beacon crossings, and a, a new crosswalk that will be protected by a crossing guard crossing Swanson. So there's a number of traffic issues, you know, or traffic fixed, you know, mitigations that they're doing.
Okay, and you went really fast at the beginning. You said UDOT will put in a light at their expense.
Correct.
When Phase One is done.
Correct.
I would like to add, the transportation master plan does have a light at both, Village Parkway and Wildlife Boulevard, so in the future, both of those will have a light. With this project and Phase One, it will be at the northern intersection.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kern. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you for your public comment. I think it's always good to hear those living in the area, the impacts that are, are gonna be, that they feel are gonna be met. You know, as I mentioned at the very beginning, you know, we're in a unique situation as a planning commission because we're administrative, and we make sure that we stay within the bounds that code and zoning puts together. We have a master plan here. As I read this in depth, I, I felt, I felt good that we were, the density was less than it could be. It could be higher, and we're going to be at six-point-eight-three units per acre. That's high. That's high. But at the same token, you know, we're looking at affordable homes, too. I mean, that is a national concern. It's a state concern. Matter of fact, the state is putting more emphasis on cities to provide affordable housing. And so we're, but this was done well before all of those types of things. So I, I come back and I say, "Thank you for coming." There was a question. Where do we go? Go to city council when this comes before city council. They have the judicial opportunity to change the things you're talking about. We do not. We can give concerns, and the public hearing will, that we had today, will go to them. They will be able to listen to your comments, but you're much more effective if you're in front of the body that judicially can make the changes, and they will listen. We love public comment.
I don't want anybody to misunderstand. When a property right is granted, if the city then takes that property right away, that's a taking, and there's a cost to that. So I, I don't want you to, I don't want there to be a misunderstanding that the... So when we're rezoning a property, then that's a legislative decision. The city council decide yes or no. Once we've already granted a zoning and we've already granted a property right, taking that away is a whole different thing that causes, that has a cost associated with it and falls under takings laws. So I, I just want that to be part of what's being stated here as well.
Thank you, Sarah. Again, the thing that the city council has an ability to look at is the approval of side streets, the long base, and the townhouse setbacks. Is that correct? Those, those three issues are the ones that, when it goes to city council, they, they can, they can, they can approve that and move forward with that. We cannot. Is that correct?
Well, you would give a recommendation at, at the planning commission and then the city council.
I'm just waiting for the mic. So the planning commission would give the recommendation, whether you recommend that the council support that or not, and then the council would make that final decision.
Thank you, Sarah. So again, thank you for coming.
Sorry, we, do we want to?
Public comment has been closed at this time, so.
It's not a requirement, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the city council does have discretion when it comes to variations in the code, and for example, the parking, the nine parking stalls they have, they have the ability to make a decision in that, in that regard.
Thank you for the clarifications. The last comment that I would have is, I do acknowledge the developers and staying, you know, they could have maxed this out even more, and they've kept that within the ramifications they feel they can do to make this model work. So I do give acknowledgement to the developers here, because it could be much more dense. And so, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Kern?
Yeah, I just have four comments. So in public comment, there were some questions about the schools, and I just want to remind people, if you have school questions or concerns, you should take those with the school board. The planning commission and council don't deal with school crowding issues or school building. So that's where that should go.
I know. I will add to that as well. We do meet with them to let them know what's coming so that they're not just blindsided by all the growth that happens here. So we do have regularly quarter meetings with the school district, the whole area, to go over upcoming growth.
And trust me, I share all your concerns. My kids go to Westlake, same. Regarding the, I'm sorry, the signal was addressed. Regarding the, the things that are in this gray space, items four, five, and six in the staff condition, is it appropriate for us to make a continuance motion and ask that changes are rendered, that our recommendation to the city council, make a continuous motion and ask that changes be rendered that comply with the code, not comply up to the possible twenty-five percent variation? Is that, is that an appropriate recommendation that we could make?
Not necessarily. So I think you just make your recommendation, and then the council decides. So you can recommend, recommend for, more parking stalls, recommend for or against variations on five and six, and then the council would make that final decision. So you wouldn't have to continue that or anything. You would just make your recommendation, whatever it is you prefer in that motion, and then that gets passed on to the council so they know what your recommendation is.
So we could make a motion for option one with some adjustments to the staff conditions, four, five, and six, and then also nine?
Right, you can absolutely, the, the conditions that are in here, the commission can make different recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
And also, just to point out, there's the restroom one in there as well.
Yeah, on nine.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I'm pro restroom. I hope it's open, but it won't be.
Is that all, Commissioner Kern?
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Mann?
Thank you. I take a deep breath here so I don't just say a bunch of things that I shouldn't say. What is the cost of takings?
Oh, I couldn't tell you that. I mean...
Does it vary?
Well, absolutely, yes. Absolutely. It will be, yes, absolutely.
Is it paid for by the city?
You know, those are legal questions that, so yes, a lot of times, though, if takings occurs, the city then pays the cost.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty lengthy procedure. It's, it's essentially under the Constitution. You'd have to pay the just and fair or reasonable value of the property, so it would take, estimates would go out. It'd, it'd be incredibly expensive for a property of this size.
So it'd be based on appraisals and fair market value and all of those things. So that's why, sorry, I didn't mean to chuckle. I just meant that that's a big question for me right on the spot. So, yes, any type of taking, there would, there would be legalities involved in appraisals and, and everything, and so the cost would vary. Yes.
Have, has the city ever?
I don't know that we're allowed to discuss the lawsuits.
It, it's a process that can take anywhere from six months if the landowner is in agreement to years of litigation, and tens of thousands, a hundred, hundreds of thousand dollars in litigation costs. And, you know, based on what the property appraises at, you could be looking at millions of dollars. I'm just speaking hypothetically because I don't know. I'm, this is a huge parcel. So it's significant, very significant. Typically, the city just does these for small pieces, for like right-of-way, road expansions, stuff like that. So yeah, it's a, it's a very long, lengthy, expensive process.
I see. Just out of curiosity, not that we're going to do this or are considering or anything like that, but is it possible, has the city ever, you know, obviously, back in 2013 and 2003, we had no idea that the city would have the growth that we have now, and that we would be lacking in infrastructure in the ways that we are now. So I feel like if this development had come to us today, we would be having a different conversation. Is it, would it be possible, or has it ever been the case that something like this has happened and the city has gone, "Whoa, we're not prepared for this. It's, it's, you know, dangerous with fire hazards and all these other things." That we require it to be rezoned to not be high-density in that location?
It, it would still be a same kind of situation where we'd be taking away their economic opportunity to proceed under the agreement that's been agreed to between the city and the developer. So there, there's different types of takings where there's the one where you take the full property, and there's the other one where you take the economic value of the property, and that's essentially what we would be doing to them because they're vested under the development agreement signed in the city.
I see.
Is it also fair to say that that agreement for the entire development included gives to the city? Like land for the park and other items?
Yes, each time that an extension or a renewal was done, there was some amount of consideration. Like Sarah mentioned, the twenty-one acres for the park, I think Ed might have mentioned it. There was pieces of Mountain View Corridor right-of-way that were given to the city that those would each have a value that the city or UDOT or whoever was going to build that and acquire the property would have had to pay at some point in time that were given as consideration under these agreements. So that's correct.
Okay. And the only way to intervene with this kind of building without a takings would be for someone to offer more money for the land and decide not to build anything.
Essentially, I guess you could say it like that.
Or ask for a rezone. I just wanna say, I'm all for affordable housing. I have two boys in their early twenties that would like to be able to own a home. I have absolutely nothing against affordable housing. I feel like high-density is absolutely needed in the right locations, where there is the proper infrastructure, where they're not just dumping three-hundred-and-eight people on an already overwhelmed community. So I, I just, I, I wanna state that. And, yeah, I, you know, there's nothing we can do about it now, but I'm vehemently against this. I guess that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, Commissioner Mann and Commissioner Kern. Commissioner Miles?
Thank you. This is an interesting time, and I really appreciate our fellow commissioners' comments and thoughts on this. I think it's very, very helpful. It's an interesting time because we're trying to balance that incredible growth, the housing crisis, all of this. But I, I agree with Commissioner Mann. I, we've gotta be smart in this. We've gotta, we've gotta look at something that was approved, started in 2003 versus 2025. It's a totally different time here. And the safety concerns has, has been brought up. The, the local comments, I think, are, are very, very helpful. So I, I just wanna add that. I, I hope our role as a planning commission has been clarified. You know, I encourage those who've come to come at the city council meeting, but, but thank you. This has been very, very helpful and enlightening.
Thank you, Commissioner Miles. Commissioner Kern? Oh, you pushed your button?
Sorry.
Okay. All right, I've got some questions. What is the, can we go to the slide that I wanna see that you don't know which one it is? That one?
That one?
That one, yep. All right. What is the open space requirement for this property?
Let's see, that was seven acres, seven-point-zero-four?
Six-point-one-four. Six-point-one-four is the requirement, and what are they meeting?
Yeah, sorry.
Nine-point-five-one.
So significantly more than the required amount. How much of that is the retention pond? How much of that is the retention ponds?
The north detention pond is 1.2 acres. The south is 0.68 acres.
Even not counting the retention ponds that are above the open space requirement?
Yeah. Okay. So with these setbacks on the, the front, is, we're looking at the front setback is the one they're asking to have reduced?
So it'd be, it would be, um, the front side. So basically, if it's like, uh, just imagine if the home is on a, a street, has a street, like a corner, it's that front side setback, if that makes sense, the street side setback.
Can you show me on the map?
Yeah, let's see. Do we have street side setback? So it's the street side setback. So it would be, um, is there a way we could zoom in on it? I wish we could.
Probably.
Yeah, there we go. So, um, it would be like for this unit, um, if we look at the road, that road there in the middle of the screen that's going down the middle of the screen, that unit that, let's just look at the one on the right there. So the setback that they're requesting an exception to would be that right where the mouse is, is that would be the side, street side setback.
So is it fair to say if that was held at 20, that it would eliminate, you know, maybe four of those units?
Yeah, I mean, you would tack on five feet on each side, set, side setback.
I, but it doesn't necessarily mean it eliminate the units because they could consider a different layout. So, so I, yes, as proposed, those would have to shift.
Yeah, but they'd re-propose. Same thing with, uh, a 1,250 or 1,240 foot block. If we were to s- make a recommendation that it be held to the city code of 1,000, they would, they would come back and re-propose a different street layout.
They'd probably do a different layout, uh-huh.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, we've already, just a, a year ago, we saw a different, um, different layout from a different builder, Polty Homes. And that, that was quite, at least where the townhomes are, was a lot different than what we're seeing right now. Uh, the single-family part was mostly the same on that plan. But yeah, they would go back to the drawing board and try and figure out a way to make it work.
So this map that we're seeing right now with the green, that is the proposed open space. And that in proposed open space includes the additional setback that they're asking for.
So that is the proposed open space. So there's two, there's, the green really should be two different colors because, so there's, there's the, the private open space, which is just for the townhomes, and then there's the community park, which is full access. So there's two different types of access there. Um, that being said, as far as the setbacks are concerned, the setback would, the, each side of those townhomes as portrayed here does have the green on the, on the sides of those townhomes. So it would, um, impact their overall open spa- i- i- you know, it is open space on that side of the townhomes.
Okay. And then we're talking about reducing the setbacks on these properties that are on the side streets, but these side streets also connect to the front street, right? And so that reduces the visibility for driving.
I mean, yes, it would encroach close, well, it would encro- with the 15-foot setback versus a 20-foot setback, it's going to be closer to the road, if that's your.
We do have a requirement that we call a clear sight triangle.
Right.
Uh, that's an engineering standard, and we make sure that there's viewing distances for cars at corners.
They are required to meet the site triangle on all, all public roads that, so that is part of. And private, yeah. So, um.
So they, they're required to meet that, the safety triangle. And then, but landscaping can go in at a later point, yeah?
In that triangle, the max is three feet for landscaping?
Yeah, so you couldn't have like a tall tree or something like that. It'd have to be shrubs or, yeah, landscaping, cert- yeah, landscaping that's not taller than, than three, three and a half feet.
So in, in the safety triangle, we're kind of assuming that they're going to meet the safety triangle with this proposed plan with the reduced setbacks.
Correct.
That's kind of like the norm?
Yeah. Um, they, they, I mean, so the area that they have there also does include open space. And, um, for them to count that as open space, it ha- it can't be too narrow or else it doesn't count as open space.
Oh, okay. Um.
Keep in mind another 70 trees are going to.
Yeah.
Had 49 and it's got to go up.
I also want to clarify, you said we're assuming, but they've actually shown the site triangles in their landscaping plans, so they show that they're compliant with that.
Okay, thank you. I.
Yeah, I just want to clarify.
I'm a city planner, and I for sure am not an engineer. Uh, so I don't know these things, right? Like, thank you. I appreciate that.
Is that the plan with the blue triangles on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And in my neighborhood, we have a requirement to have a, a tree in front of our house on whatever. I don't know if that's an HOA requirement or a city requirement. Is there a city requirement to have trees in front of your house?
So there is a requirement, but the city doesn't go enforce it and like make you do it. Um, when we do a townhome project and they do all the landscaping, or they put in the required city, um, trees, street trees. Um, on private streets, do we enforce that on private streets? The street tree? Is it in the standard? I don't know off the top of my head. So it's in our street standards. That's why I'm asking our engineering.
Yeah. Yeah, you can see on here, you can see where they're, where they are required to provide trees. They ha- they are showing that.
And I'll zoom in on that as well to kind of get a better.
Yeah, there's several.
Better way to zoom than to just, oh, I didn't mean to move the image, but.
Yeah, a lot of it is on, for example, Swainson does require a lot of trees there. The ro- the road that goes through the townhomes, that is a private road. That's not a public street.
Okay. So if we zoom out a little bit on that one so we can see now that we know that idea of where the trees are going, we're kind of talking about here is having houses that are closer to the street on a street that is longer than visually, than someone has decided is visually appealing, um, with no required trees in a lot of it and very minimal ability for landscaping and kind of open space, right? Like, yeah, that statement that you said earlier about you can't regulate ugly is pretty true here. So, so with the setbacks, they're still all within the safety requirements. Talk to me, and I, I know you went over this. It's, this is, meeting's extra long. Um, but talk to me again about the, the street length and why.
Yeah, so we, we have a couple of things I can go into a little more detail. So our, our, we require maximum street length is 1,000 feet. I- if it's longer than 800 feet, you have to have a mid-block crossing. So, um, you'll see those dark lines on there in the middle of the white areas. Those are, those are, um, trails that basically go through in between those single-family lots. And they're providing those because those of the block lengths on those. So that, that was one requirement that we have. And then 1,000 is usually the cutoff, but because this is a PUD, you know, again, because it's on the hillside, they could, they can request a block length greater than 1,000 feet. And so that's, that's the proposed, um, variation to our ordinance that they're proposing with this, um, site plan, which would be up to, so the longest street is the one on the east, which is the, the townhome road furthest to the right on the screen here. That's the longest at, um, I have the numbers written down here, 1,245. That's Sly Fox Way, then Whispering Fox Drive, it would be at 1,034 feet. So it's 34 feet, uh, variation on that road. And then their Fox Glove Way is shown at approximately 1,159 feet. Those are all approximate numbers, by the way, so.
So there's.
Can I add to that, too? The street side setback request is for the townhomes. So that would be any townhome building that has the side of the building towards the street. So that's a total of seven buildings. So one, two, three, four, and then these ones over here, five, six, and then seven. So, sorry, is that eight? Did I miscount? One, two, three, four? One, two, three, four. So eight buildings. So any building that has a side elevation, um, would be where they were making that request. So eight buildings.
And, and also the side setbacks for single families?
I'm going to hear 15. Yeah. And the, the single families, um, the setbacks for those have already been established at the 15 feet.
Okay, that's all I have. Any other commissioner comment tonight?
I, is it all right if I respond to just a couple of the comment, the questions that were asked?
Yes, please do.
So there was a question asked about, um, in the agreement, it says once 2,000 units are in place and the city will improve the park. So we're currently at 1,137 units. The city does keep track of that. I just, I just want to, there to be an awareness that the city does keep track of that. Um, that's passed on to the city manager and city council. So that is something they, we are keeping track of. There was a question on whether SID payments have been made. Yes, those have been made. And then, um, as far as the sledding hill to remain, uh, when we, we do create a concept plan for the park, we will have a public open house so that the people who live in the area can come and give comment on conceptual plans for the city park in that location. So I do want you to know that you can give your feedback in the future. Um, there was comment made that, um, there, we had park plans and it got put somewhere else. So there was previously a concept plan. The city didn't own the property till the end of 2023. So when we extended the agreement, we said, we'll extend it, but we need that property because up until that point had been in private ownership. So one critical step in the city being able to move forward with the park, even though we did have a previous concept plan, we still didn't have the, um, the land. So we do have the land now that's significant. Um, and then the agreement gives us to the 2,000th unit, and right now we're at 1,137. So the city is aware of all these things. I just want you to know that. And then, um, there was, we talked about the, the schools a bit and those concerns. As I understand those, and we've talked about the intersection, and then, um, the nine stalls the commission can recommend on. And then, um, we talked about the taking. So I think I've covered the majority of questions. Just wanted to give some of those answers while, while we have residents here.
Thank you for doing that. I actually wrote down to ask about that and didn't, so thank you for bringing that up. Um, Commissioner Wildin.
Yeah, is there a way, I'm just wondering, I, I think most of us are not in favor of adding 308 more units at this place. This is not a good place for that. I think most of us are feeling that way. But that clearly is not the question we're being asked. Um, and to oppose this, i- it's not the question we're being asked. So opposing this wouldn't accomplish anything there. But is there a way to send a message to the city council that many of us are uncomfortable with this? I don't know if there's anything they can do about this at this point, but, but I think that it's really, I, I think there's a message we want to send that we're uncomfortable with this, but we're not sure how to do it.
I have a suggestion on that that I've been thinking about, and, uh, in the end.
Commissioner Kern, is your suggestion to attend the city council meeting?
I'm getting there, yeah. I just, I had two comments for you. One is that we just make a recommendation, a non-binding recommendation to the council, just to be aware. And then if we're going to make a non-binding recommendation, um, I, I think we could make the argument that this is not consistent with 19.07 because the proposed plan doesn't comply with the recommended setbacks and the recommended block length. And although, because although the code allows for variations up to 25%, and it requires that they will not be unreasonably withheld as long as these other three requirements are met, I think we could make an argument to say the planning commission disagrees with the staff recommendation and that, um, the granting may adversely affect the rights of adjacent landowners, that it may adversely affect public health, safety, or general welfare, and that it may, um, be opposed to the general spirit and intent of this chapter or land use element to the general plan. So although staff recommendation was that they were consistent, I, I would propose that we consider making that recommendation that it's not consistent with 1907 and that.
Sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt. So the items you're talking, so the PUD approval has already been granted. So those discussions are, is the PUD, so in terms of vesting, so then we talked about in 2003, it was approved. 2013, it was redone. In 2020, 23, it was extended. So that's the vesting has already occurred.
I get that.
So, right. So, um, the items that you're reading off are the granting of the PUD, and the PUD has already been granted.
Okay, I thought that was in granting of variance.
That's actually, there's a section in 1907 that talks about variations.
Oh, I see. Oh, so you're talking about the variations, not the project.
Variation criteria.
I thought, I thought you meant the project. Sorry. So, right.
This, this is a gray space of whether we grant variations to those.
Oh, certainly, certainly. You don't have to recommend the variations. Sorry.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant the whole project.
Is we either recommend against it because we don't support the variation, because we don't think they're consistent with the reasons why you grant a variation, or we recommend for it with a, with a, I guess a rejection of items four, five, and six.
I was misunderstanding. Some of that language is similar to rezoning language, so I was misunderstanding.
It's my first time doing this, so I could have been wrong, too.
So, right. So with the administrative approval, the question is, does it meet code? Those variations are, are not a requirement. Yes.
Yeah, okay. And those are inconsistent with 1907 as defined, right?
You can make that finding.
Okay.
So Sarah, that, that type of a motion could be made?
You can make a finding that you, that you don't, right, you can make a finding that you don't support the variations.
Correct, yeah. So at the end of the recommended motion, there's a kind of like a blank line. You could fill in the blank and say, we don't, we don't agree that it, we don't, this planning commission doesn't feel that it is consistent with 1907 as, as stated, you know, so you could, you could make that motion.
And, and the other thing I think we can consider is, uh, there is no code for how many parking spots. And so that is, uh.
Four.
Yeah, number four. So we could also suggest that that be rejected and that they consider more parking spots, um, more than nine or not street adjacent parking.
So can I clarify? We're looking at the conditions and we are talking about approving as submitted by staff with the exception of four, five, six, and nine?
No, nine is not, we wouldn't be making an exception to nine. We'd be clarifying on nine whether we say it shall or shall not include a restroom.
Okay, so four, five, and six, and a clarification on nine that we wanted included. Yeah, okay.
And then, I, I'm a little nervous to say this. I actually, I, I disagree with some of this. I, I understand that new development is always hard, but we're talking about an area that is going to continue growing. This is kind of this first step into the supergrowth that will continue to come, especially out this far. And so I don't find this development to be vastly out of step of what's going into other parts of our city. And if we look at, you know, the high density that's going into other parts of our city and compare that to this, this actually looks a lot better. And so to me, there's this weight of, it could be worse, right? Like originally, they had the option to put in 500 units and we're down to 300. And so there, that is a risk that we're taking in, in making things difficult is having them come back with a plan that has a higher.
Density.
And so I want to just be really clear about that piece. Am I wrong on that?
Um, I mean, they, they have a maximum density of 300 that they can do per the MDA. I mean, they, they have a maximum density of 300 that they can do per the MDA. So if they can figure out a layout that makes that work, they could propose that.
And maximum townhomes as well, right?
Right.
They are maxed, they are currently maxed out at their townhome. So 136 maximum allowed per the.
Yeah.
We'll all get more townhomes in a future.
But if we compare this, if we compare this plan to other plans that are going in in other parts of the city, this, this one looks pretty good. And I, and so my opinion on this is that there's some pieces that need to change. I don't like the park. I don't like the setbacks on the townhomes. I don't like the parking at the park. But overall, density-wise.
But the conditions that we're talking about, looking at four, five, and six address those concerns. And then on nine, saying that we want a restroom, it, it gives a clear message that there are three things that we want to look at and then we want a restroom.
Correct. I just don't want to be on record as being against this plan.
Yeah.
Because I am not. So. All right. Any more commissioner comment? All right, we will go ahead and entertain a motion.
Do you want to do that, Charlie?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Charlie, you may have to.
I'll make a motion. So I move the planning commission forward a recommendation for approval of the requested preliminary plat and site plan for Fox Hollow Neighborhood Four located at Village Parkway and Swanson Avenue with the findings and conditions in the staff report. With the exception of condition four, the nine parking stalls should be reconsidered to increase parking stalls and take parking off the street. With condition five, variation granted for more than 1,000-foot blocks be recommended to be rescinded. And with condition six, the variation for townhome street-side setbacks granted from 20 to 15 feet be removed. And condition nine, be clarified to say shall include a restaurant, restroom to accommodate the park programming. I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you for that motion, Commissioner Kern. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you for that second. Commissioner Hale, do we have any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I will now call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Commissioner Mann, would you like to add a statement on your opposing vote?
I just, I can't in good conscious vote to move this thing forward when I disagree with every single part of it.
Okay, thank you for that. And we will move forward. And we will actually be taking a short break.
Five minutes.
Yeah, please be back in five minutes.